Open the meeting by calling on Commissioner McGea ahead to lead us in prayer, then if you will remain standing and join us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Good Lord, thank you for this day and for your love for us, and we thank you most of all for Jesus Christ who died for our sins. Lord, we want to give you thanks today for the rain as much needed. You know our needs, and Lord, we thank you again for that. Lord, pray that you would be with each one of us here today as we go about the county's business, give us the wisdom and understanding to make the correct decisions, and go with each one of us as we leave here, protect us in the wet roads, and we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Join us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We're pleased to see you here, appreciate your interest in the business of our county. We have no public hearings scheduled for this meeting and no scheduled citizen comment. Other elected officials, Judge, do you have anything you want to share with us from your department?
Fall time for the election has ended.
Okay.
Get ready for the 2024 election.
Okay. All right. June what? I mean, June what?
March.
Okay. March 4th?
Fifth.
Fifth? All right. Just checking.
You got one more chance, Greg.
Okay. Let's see, the sheriff's not in here. He will be, I think, in a few minutes. Chuck, what do you have?
I was gonna tell everyone a few things.
Okay. Come on up.
Well, we're in our 2023 collections, and we're in the middle of November, and we've done really well. I'd like to commend my staff and everybody for helping, and I'd like also remember y'all to tell y'all that if you're turning 65, make sure you sign up for the over 65 exemption. That means that you would have been born in 1958, and you may have graduated in 76 in high school. So I'm trying to find all those classes and see if they own a home and see if they can file for over 65.
Okay, good.
There's no income restrictions.
There what's that?
There's no income restrictions.
Yeah, there's an income restriction, but there's still a discount for over 65.
There is a discount.
Yes, sir. And then if you're $12,000 or less on your adjusted gross income, there's no taxes for you. And if you're 100% disabled, military, or social security, there is no taxes on your home.
Even underage 65?
Even under 65 and disability, that's correct.
Okay.
So thank y'all very much for what y'all do.
Thank you, Chuck. Move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have received the minutes from the October 24th meeting by email. Have had a chance to review those, and you have in your packet accounts payable and payroll for the month of October. I'm sure you've had a chance to review those, ask if there are any corrections or changes that you noted, or is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion, second to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, those are approved.
One and nothing.
Under old business, we want to consider board appointments. Personnel review board was up for consideration at the last meeting, and I know, I think Michael said you had somebody you were having a conversation with. How do we stand on that?
I did. I talked with Wyatt Sasser about, and Wyatt's definitely interested. We're gonna try to talk again Friday. It would make a little bit for the football game, but it was raining, and we never, never kind of crossed the path. I do know that Wyatt is interested in it. He just wanted to talk a little bit more about it before he made a decision, but like I said, I didn't get, was unable to get in touch with him Friday.
Okay. We've had, in addition to Wyatt, we've had a couple of other applications turned in where folks have expressed willingness to serve. One concern that we've raised is a couple of those were elected officials serving on councils, and so we, I think we have determined that we may be better served to make sure that this is somebody that's not in an elected position. We have other slots that those people could be wanting to are considered. Specifically, I know the Regional Planning Commission requires certain slots to be filled by elected officials. So I think we'll look at those in the future, but just mentioning that so you'll understand why we're delaying a little bit. All right. So that will come up unless somebody else has a name to...
I'll read back out again.
We'll bring that up for the next agenda then, as under old business. There's a question on out-of-state travel for the Sheriff's Department, and tell us what status that is, Karen.
I believe that we were still waiting on additional information from the Chief Clerk, meeting with the attorney to make sure that it covers the grounds.
That's right.
That's right.
So we're covered there, or wait on?
I think we need to...
Wait on that?
Wait a little bit.
Okay.
There's still time, as far as I can tell, and if you agree with that, I would appreciate having the extra time.
Okay. We'll keep that, roll that forward under old business again for the next meeting. All right, underneath business, let's consider adoption, or at least discussion, on Amendment 909 policies and procedures, and I'll call on Karen first to mention the items that that affects, and then I'm sure we'll bring the attorney into that discussion as well.
Yes, Morgan may before heading off. I'm not sure which way he would rather go.
We'll have our option to handle that.
Basically, we were looking at an option that's allowed to county government to provide for employment recognition and appreciation of our employees, and it just gives them guidelines, and we have to adopt a resolution in order to be in compliance.
That's right. And so there's also, this is done under the Constitutional Amendment 909, and that legal process requires you all to talk about what it is you may be trying to do and put the public on notice of it in a meeting in advance of adoption. So what's in your packet today? It would be what, a program that would be authorized under the law. If it aligns with what your wishes are, then you would just be sharing with everyone today that this is what you would intend to adopt at your next meeting.
Okay.
And this program, like you said, it does, like, for safety recognition, longevity, or...
That's right. So prior to this Constitutional Amendment being passed maybe about three or four years ago, the county was restricted from honoring its employees by even purchasing lunches or plaques, and this now opens the door to be able to recognize your employees in a way that you so desire, whether that's longevity for five-year pins or plaques or lunch. And so the county will be limited to only what it is that it outlines in the resolution that you adopt at your next meeting if you choose to. So it will be very clear as to what you are doing for your employees, but yes, for longevity, just as an annual thank you, it can take a couple different forms.
So I think our interest specifically was in employee recognition or employee acknowledgement with the luncheon or other de minimis forms of recognition for longevity and so forth. Did somebody have other things that you would like for us to consider bringing into the umbrella of that 909 resolution?
Does that include Christmas bonuses?
Christmas bonuses are restricted.
Not for us.
It does not. No, it does not, and you're not able to do that.
But any safety bonus could be, or so?
Yes. So there are two sample resolutions. So recognition is considered, you know, kind of in one category under the law, and then another category are safety incentives. And so there's a, my understanding is that the county has a safety incentive program already, and so this would align with that and, yes, authorize, you know, if certain metrics were met, you know, no claims, no incidents, that type of thing, and then there could be an incentive for...
And that's included for full-time or part-time personnel, is that correct?
It could be, if you wanted to restrict it to just one group, you could.
Or open it up to...
Or if you want it for everyone, you can do that too, yes.
Anybody have anything beyond the employee items that we're referring to?
My question, but I asked in the back, and I think it was answered, was everything that's included in the amendment. We adopt or we look at what we choose, but we don't have to fulfill everything on there, right?
No, it would be limited to the resolutions that you adopt. So for example, the two that are, that you're looking at in the packet are the employee recognition. It does not go broader. It's not one of those, we're adopting one policy, therefore everything under that amendment now applies in Covington County. That is not the case.
Good deal. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Does this have anything to do with the longevity bonuses? In other words, we have been given a longevity bonus at the end of the year for our employees. Will this affect that in any way?
This would not affect that.
That's why we do that.
Those are discretionary funds.
It's not ours, so it's not county ones.
So yours is being done out of discretionary funds outside of this, so, all right. Any other questions? All right. So what I'm hearing is we'll move forward under the limited idea of employee-related bonuses and recognitions. So if we can draft resolutions that look like that, then is that sufficient notice?
That we'll get it drafted with the concerns that we brought up, either or.
Yeah, we will. All right, and we'll plan for that to be on the agenda the next meeting as well.
Thank you.
Next item is consider restaurant retail liquor license for Hilltop Restaurant. Jimmy Adam Turner, owner, operator. Page 36 is the application information from the ABC Board, and Commissioners, you've been aware of this for a couple of weeks, and I'll ask what your wishes are on this. First, let me ask this, is anyone here intending to speak on this application? Okay. Want to give you the chance if you chose to.
Okay. I'll make a motion when we move forward.
All right, Tommy is moving that we approve the license.
I second.
I'll second because I know they have a business here in town, and no one's brought up any issues, and they've had a liquor license up at Hilltop from the pre-assignment, so...
So the motion and second. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's announced. Next is consider the holiday schedule for 2024. Pages 37, 38 in your packet, Commissioners. Ms. Karen, if you want to elaborate on that?
It's pretty much the same each year, just based on what day of the week a holiday falls. It's set by our personnel policy handbook. Rachel has gone and compared with all the state holidays as well, and kind of made sure everything was kind of in line. This is just the same recommendation we have each year.
Two different schedules because we have some employees that work four days a week, others that work five, so we're addressing both of those. Total 14 paid holidays in the schedule. You see those, Commissioners? Do you have a question on any of those, or is there a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the policy, the calendar is set forth here. Anything else you may have questions? All right, well, vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's Karen. Next is consider a resolution authorizing a joint Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation Improvement Program application with the city of Andalusia. Lynn, do you want to come up and talk about that a little bit from your perspective? Let me read this. Resolution authorizing the joint transportation rehab and improvement program application with the city of Andalusia, and I don't know how Alabama Department of Transportation factors into that, into the resolution, but it's, they're part of the total package, so tell us what you have.
You know, about a, I guess it's been about a year ago, we had a meeting at the DOT office, and we're discussing some safety issues in the county, which we do generally every year, and this came up, this intersection, I'm sure everybody's aware of this intersection right here, and there's a lot of accidents, a lot of near bad accidents at this intersection.
An accident yesterday.
Yeah.
Where's the intersection at?
Right here.
Brooklyn Road, South Three Notch.
This is Fletcher's Energy right here, Brooklyn Road, and then this is South Three Notch right here. But anyway, at the request of the state, I just took upon myself to go ahead and kind of do some preliminary drawings and get something going. I originally had it set up to kind of turn and just make a big loop, excuse me if I can see this, but I had originally wrote it kind of up here and just bypassed all that into the road over there in that one spot right there. But, you know, that's given up a lot of valuable retail space in that one area right there, so we decided to go along that existing road that's right there at that location.
So working jointly with the city of Andalusia, they have a concern about how Brooklyn Road intersects with the bypass. There was a concern about how South Three Notch Street comes out, and there's a red light there, if you remember. There's not a red light at Brooklyn Road, and so the idea is to move those into a single intersection and one red light for both, which certainly will help folks coming in from the rural parts of our county on Brooklyn Road. It's gonna be a lot safer.
Lynn, I'm trying to see from here, what street does it turn? Because I see it goes by one.
It's Woodlawn. It comes in behind the Western Ware shop there and comes back on Woodlawn right there.
In terms of the fruit land on the...
Well, we have to own that because I know we're gonna, because I know you're talking about making the turn on the Three Notch, like a one-way out?
It's a one-way in. This, basically, the signalization light here, South Three Notch would go away, this signal light, so you can't make a left turn out. You'd still be able to make a right in and right out.
You've got to save a corner. We can't tell where you're pointing with two glasses. Well, you have to cut another drive into the back of the Touchy Country or the Western Because once you turn it there, my concern would be, you know, you're gonna take a lot of traffic away from in front of them.
So they're going behind the Western Store.
Would you have to turn, like, make a drive through the back of theirs?
And it's kind of a site, it's a site business issue. It's Westside. I said, it's, once you get this light screen out here, people are really picking up speed, getting out of town, although there's a speed limit, and that's a lot of issues when people from Brooklyn try to make a left turn out. It's a, it's a bad curve. It's in a bad curve out there, and it's hard to see coming around that. So a signal light there at that intersection would soften that up.
I was just looking at your drawing out there where I think the Touchy Country's the red top building?
Yes.
Or we're gonna have to build a drive into the back of that?
Well, we can make the existing street, and this is all preliminary. This is all preliminary. But that wire, I'm not gonna say call it a little roundabout, but we could probably reduce that down right there, because I don't know how much traffic would actually end up going down that way. A lot of people still used to turn it on to South Three Notch. They could just still make the left turn and just make a right in at that intersection.
City officials have indicated that they, that the existing street, South Three Notch, would still be there to get you to the bypass, and you'd be able to turn off, they would create an access into those parking lots there, the Western Store. So they're not gonna be, I don't think they're gonna be adversely affected. It probably will help them ultimately.
No.
What about ambulance?
It won't affect them.
Or getting to the hospital.
Non-emergency situation, no.
You know, there's been some concerns, you know, and not based all my, because this is all preliminary, I can't really, you can't do a full-blown survey on all this kind of stuff. So I use the GIS, our local online mapping, just for this, and it's for preliminary stuff just like this, like the, Ms. Dawn Dozier, she has a business right on the corner right here. You know, we can reduce the lot down to size. I thought we could probably still even protect her property right there where she is, just by using a curb section. We can reduce the impact of the limits of construction. Instead of putting a ditch section, you put a curb section in there and really cut it down on what you actually need in that location. But again, this is all preliminary. Estimates came, it's kind of high. I sat down with a state official there in Troy and went over, and I was shocked at how much things have actually gone up, because this, our estimates, I think, close to $2.6 million for this whole project, and you're not looking at a very long road. But you're looking at removing an intersection light, put a new signalized intersection up, and that could be over $300,000 alone just for that one item. So, but I think it's a viable thing. If it can save a life, I think it's well worth the effort to put into this, so...
I'll go ahead and make the motion to go along in the joint effort. Because like you said, I know, even from when I owned the ambulance service, there are several wrecks and even some lives have been lost at both those intersections.
Yes.
So I think it'd be very beneficial, and people may have a little heartburn to start with because it's something different, but...
But I like to know, as far as fatalities, that they were all left turns coming out that caused most of those. Because if it's a right in, right out, it's more of a yield situation or just a deceleration issue right there. So I feel that would probably soften the condition as it is right there, the South Three Notch there now, the bypass.
So the immediate need is to pursue funding, a source of funding for it, and so that's...
And this grant's $2 million, I mean, the max is $2 million, so, but again, like I said, I'd rather be higher than lower on my estimate.
What was the estimate of cost on it when you met?
Greg, I got it right here. Give me just a moment. It's right around $2.6 million. I thought I had it with me, but I don't. But it's closer, it's right around $2.6 million, Greg.
$2.6?
Yes.
And looking at a grant from potentially of $2 million, so it'd leave a $600,000 we'd have to come up with between us and the city, unless we could find some additional funding from another grant.
Yes. I think Tuberville's Office, I think we could pursue Tuberville's Office as well to maybe get some funding for this.
So we have a motion from Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions on that from Lynn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution is adopted, we'll get that in your hands. You can deliver it to Aldott or to the city, whoever we need to get it to, to move that along.
And I'm supposed to also be getting letters. I've got Troy and our local county, state administrator here that's gonna be giving letters of recommendation for this, as well as the state's behind this.
Yeah.
And they're definitely behind this change.
Look for, look for where we can go for other sources for the $600,000, and let's go ahead and start working instead of waiting until we're into the project.
Okay.
All right. What else do you have, Lynn, on why you're up there?
We opened bids about a week and a half, two weeks ago for hot bituminous surface treatment, or bituminous surface treatment, and the prices actually kind of came down, with the exception of just one little bracket. Most of them was anywhere from 4% to 10%, cheaper than were last year.
Yeah.
So I was glad to see that.
So you're recommending the award to...
Award, it was only the only bidder, and that was SNC Materials for that bid.
Sold bidder. Is there a motion to award this bid?
Motion to award the bid.
Second.
Motion and second. Anybody have a question on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. All right, next?
Next, we had another award two weeks ago for the asphalt plant mix also. We had just one bid, and that was wire grass construction, and I recommend that bid as well. That's about, theirs is about 2.5% above what it was last year on theirs, so. But they were, and I'll admit, the reason probably for that was the, because we have a price adjustment when things bid, and we've been working that bid for two or three years, and we've been actually getting a big discount, almost a $10 a ton discount for the mix because of where the asphalt index came in. So they're just making adjustment for the current prices.
So you're comfortable this is a fair price?
Yeah.
So you hear the recommendation, is there a motion to award the bid?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion, second. Any other, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's approved. Let's talk about the line base.
We opened that bid yesterday, and we had just one bid at nine for that, and it was to Sarah Pate Logging. And we have our rock, we got several, there's probably eight or 10 different classes of rock that we generally buy, typically only get two of them, and all the prices remain the same except for our riprap. It went up about $2 a ton, but it's the only bid, and I recommend we keep it, so...
All right, is there a motion to award this bid to the sold bidder?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions? We'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I do have a question. This is the only bid you got, is that what you said?
Yep.
Stovall or...
We're working with Stovall. We don't really have to have a bid for any county. We can just buy from them, and we've been trying to get some 57s for a while, and they're supposed to have the screen set up, but we have yet to get the go-ahead on that.
Okay.
Because it does make a big difference, because Pate's moved about 15 more miles, so it adds about 30-mile round trip, so, and I look at everything on travel distance from, to and from a quarry, your haul distance, and because of that, it kind of pushed Boggs or Sarah Pate Logging further their way, because it allowed, because of the cost difference. So they add 30 miles to a round trip, that's a lot of miles to get...
So if you buy from an in-county source, you'll do that as long as it's...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
All right. Next is a consider changing the disposal method on an item that we previously declared surplus.
I agree. This is that wheeled excavator that we had, and I'd like to at least put that maybe either on our, you know, we have a friends and family, county association pays that my assistant came up with for the association to make up a place you can actually post equipment for other counties to look at. They want to buy it, and for gov deals, I'd like to use whatever avenue we feel, take whichever one we feel is the best avenue to get the best price for that, so...
So have y'all established a reserve or a minimum price that you think we should consider on that, so we'll know if another county offers us something, whether it's a viable offer?
I'm hoping about $120,000, $130,000 personally.
To help y'all that we need to establish a base and say if it's this much or more, we're fine?
Yeah, I thought it'd be a big need for that, but there's just not a lot of, there's not a lot of people that really wants that, really that machine, but I still think it's worth at least that much money.
So how much should we set a reserve for, 120 or 110?
Just go with just 110, because I hate to give up, give up...
A sale.
A sale for that.
Okay.
And if we don't, I may come back later and may have to lower it or...
So what he's proposing is putting it up so other counties or local municipalities are aware, and then at the same time, you're gonna list on gov deals?
Yeah.
Okay. So those are the ways he's proposing. Are you okay with establishing a base of 110,000?
Yeah. Is there a time limit that's set for the...
No, I don't think we can pull, I don't think, gov deals doesn't really have a, we can pull it, I guess, at any time, so...
But I was saying, I didn't know if, you say you get an offer of 100,000, and we're setting at a reserve of 110, and we're down to like two days left or something if we had a...
Maybe it's an emergency call meeting or something, just to get a photo on that.
All right, what are your wishes? So two issues, setting, whether we set a reserve and also whether we allow you to dispose of it other than through wood auction at this time, because they don't have an auction in the immediate future, is that right?
Now, we can, we don't have to really set a reserve if you don't want to, because we can actually, I'd come to y'all if we feel it's, if it's a price, because I hate to like set a reserve, pin us back in case we do want to go ahead and make the call.
Anybody have a crystal ball you want to take a chance on? Just let it...
You have to get fair market value, that's what gentleman reserves.
Well, an auction, but we can still say, I mean, an auction gives you fair market value. That's the idea of auctioning at all, but you can still set a reserve and say, but we're not willing to sell it at fair market value, so we'll hold this amount. Is that a fair assumption?
And I can come back with a more fair, a number...
Other than with another county, and I don't know that we still have to get fair market...
Because if another county's gonna look at it, they can just say, okay, we're gonna give this amount, but if we can't set a reserve, we still have the option to knock the sell door.
I mean, if you, I think what I'm hearing is that we expect that fair market value is in the range of 110 to 120, and so as long as we're obtaining fair market value, I hear, I think everything is aligned here. You're trying to ensure that you're not letting it go to auction for, you know, lowest bidder at 20,000, right? You're trying to ensure that you're not letting it go to auction for, you know, lowest bidder at twenty thousand, right? You don't wanna.
And I can get a more, I can get you a more firm market value for that piece of equipment.
Well, we were trying to do two things, we're looking at putting it on gov deals and that establishes fair market value. We can still determine whether we're willing to sell it at that price if happens to be low.
On gov deals, don't we have to put a reserve on gov deals anyway or?
You can, but I don't think you do, but.
But I'm just saying.
But, but I'm more concerned about listing it for other counties and, and we get a quote or an, an offer of eighty thousand. Are we willing to take that from another county?
Well, let's do this, we got plenty of time, let's just go and just do it for gov deals for now. And see what, let it run and kinda see what it does, so we fill it.
You have the option of no selling it if it's not sufficient?
Yeah.
Alright.
We'll just go that avenue, then we can put it on the county website and actually put a, a, a reserve. And let the market dictate what that reserve will be.
If you look on, like just say gov deals are the ones that sold in the past, it's rough, the same machine, you can get a average of them and still come up with a fair market value, you can put on the county side, couldn't you?
Probably, I don't know that we're bound by the same restrictions with other counties, are we?
Um, the, the only restriction is obtaining fair market value and you can do that.
Restrictions on that as well?
Yeah, yes. But, but, but they're, right, I mean, as you're identifying, depending on what avenue you're using, right? The, the value may be different if you're, if you're advertising nationally, statewide, regionally to other counties.
And it could be less, I mean, that hundred thousand, it could be less, it could be eighty thousand.
So Lynn's recommendation is that we list on gov deals and, and see what the.
And I'll figure out, I get more of an up to date value on that piece, cause we've had it, it's been back from wood now, probably about six weeks to almost two months.
We have two pieces of equipment listed, are you wanting this on both pieces of equipment?
Yeah, one's the head, I think the other one's the, that head on that. It's really, it's really part of the machine, but yeah, you're right, there's two different pieces.
Two different assets.
But yeah, we need to, we'll do both on gov deals.
Is there a motion to list on gov deals?
Make a motion.
Second motion and second questions. Anything else to clarify? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Alright, that's addressed. What else do you have, reports on?
Uh, just, we've bush hogging, we're, we've got everything from, I think, County Road twenty-four. Everything north of twenty-four. I, everything east of, what we got left is south of twenty-four, west of three thirty-one. We're down around Country Crossing, Parrish Road, that area just out of Lock Cart. And then we're working our way back east on that and we got a little bit back to Pleasant Homeschool, that general area. Hogfoot backed up that way and we'll be through with our, our cutting back all the way. We're a little bit more paint striping and about time we get geared up, rain's come, but we did get most of Brooklyn Road shot the other day. Did a little bit of Paget Road. But we're, as soon as it gets more dry weather, we'll be back doing that as well. But we finished our grassing on the main full section. If I get some good weather, I gotta stake out the alignment again there on our one oh seven project, but we'll be ready to pave. We're at that point now, we're ready to pave, so when we get some dry weather, we'll get that middle section totally done and get everything dressed back up to it, but.
Is there a temperature requirement on the painting?
It just needs to be a good dry day. I mean, we can handle temps about sixteen and above what you prefer, but it's more the humidity than it's anything else. So it just needs some low, low humidity days, cause it dries pretty quick. So.
Comments, questions?
Only thing, Lynn, I know with our driveway policy, I know, I think we slowed down the route smart doing them. It was kinda brought to my attention that maybe some contractors are not putting out the workhead signs and blind curves, you know, when they closed, we just need to make sure.
I gotta, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make a modification to that, to our permit process, they'll have to give us notifications, so we can at least come and inspect, at least some of their operations while they work.
And the policy doesn't require that they have?
Yes, it is.
And I think.
But I don't need to get notice, they need to give us notice, one, they're actually wanting me to put it in.
When they was actually putting the pipe, it was kind of in a curve and there was no signs.
But it's their responsibility, not ours.
It's theirs, that's correct, yeah.
But just for safety of the general public.
Yeah.
We need to be able to follow up or, like you said, slide by there and inspect to see.
I don't, that needs to go to a vote, I'll just make a little, some verbiage change in the, in the policy that they gotta give us written notice at least twenty-four hours before they actually go. So we can at least see their operation.
And if they're working on the right of way, is there a requirement for signage or flag?
We got it, that's the requirement now.
So whatever that policy is, we might need to re.
I just need to probably get and reinforce it, cause like I said, we don't know when these guys are putting these pipes in, they don't give us any really notice, they're out there doing it, they just call us when it's done, so.
And you're gonna do that administratively, okay?
How many more driveways do we have left to do?
There's still probably about twelve or fifteen now, Ms. Lynn, we're, we had about sixty, we had several. But we're, we're getting down to the short roads on our end.
Sounds good.
We have pipe to finish.
Yes.
Um, what about the traffic light at Horn Hill, have we got anything on it?
Uh, I've got a quote in my office, I apologize for not bringing that to me today, I, I talked to the state guy that handles the lighting for their, for their state highways. There's a different company other than what we've been using. But I've got a cost, I gotta break down the cost there, I was gonna give that to the town hall and let them come up with that. But I do have, I do have that there in the office, so. But I was looking at, you know, we have, we budgeted money for some of these intersections to get rid of these older beacon, beacon signs that we have. They're, they're big rifle targets, people don't believe that, but they get shot out all the time. And these more smaller lights, got smaller LEDs, they can't shoot them up as bad as they can just that real big six inch light. And they get shot up. Um, the housing, I'm surprised the one at Sasser's Crossroads is even still hanging on the light, it's been shot so many times. So, it's just dangerous, I don't know why people wanna do that, it's a danger to the public, traveling public. But it's like stealing stop signs, we've had two this week already, had one this morning. I don't know why people wanna steal stop signs, but they do.
Yeah, I need one on Battles Road too, it's gone.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, Lynn, we appreciate you, your department. We're near the end of the agenda, one thing we need to bring up is an amendment to the budget for a one-time pay supplement.
Yes.
Is that the wording part?
Yes, there was some additional rollover funding from FY twenty-three that we can roll over that will cover the cost of one-time pay supplement. With a small amount of funds, maybe from the contingency to add to that, to finish it out. But that would allow a one-time pay supplement for employees, five hundred for full time and two fifty for part time.
The approximate cost of that is?
It's right around eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand. Uh, what are your wishes, commissioners? Did you entertain a motion for this?
Make a motions.
Supplement? Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion two seconds? These don't have to vote, everybody's. Uh, any questions or anything you need to clarify on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Alright, that's approved.
And I, and Greg, I'm gonna bring this up, matter of fact, this is, somebody asked me about this, for like the safety bonuses that they give out. Our part-time people don't get one. And I think it's in our policy, but I would like to make a change, however we can do it, because these people are subject to the same procedures as everybody else there. And they're just responsible for staying as safe as anybody else. I would like to make a change, I don't know if we can retroact it or whatever, that they actually get one also, because these guys are, and ladies are out there like everyone else. You know, and they're, they're subject to drug tests, to safety meetings and everything, so.
I think there'd be an interest in doing that if you can, if you'll work with Ms. Karen on, on how to, how to draft that change to the policy. Then we'll have a specific proposal to consider, maybe we can get that on for the next meeting? Okay, good. I think everybody's favorable, if we can keep the attorney happy on that, so we'll be sure to talk to her.
We'll let, we'll let the attorney draft it in there.
Okay. Alright, uh, Michael, why you, why you have the floor? How about giving us an update on the mobile x-ray service that we're looking at?
We've met several times trying to help with the cost of the medical at the jail. The medical at the jail is astronomical. We've actually talked with a different x-ray company, the sheriff's been there, I think me and Greg have talked, Karen's been in there about changing over to them. The cost a month is a little bit higher, but we get a whole lot more from them than we do from the ones we have now. The ones we have now, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, only come by like a couple of days a week. So anything after that, if somebody just says, oh, I hurt my arm, now we got to send them to the hospital, we get an x-ray, an ER visit, the whole ball of wax. Where this company here would actually come in twenty-four hours a day, shoot a x-ray and within an hour, we have results faxed back to the nurses, the sheriff, the medical staff over there. I feel like in the long run, it will actually be more beneficial to the county. We're looking at some different things, Greg, me and you and the sheriff, and I'm gonna thank Ms. Karen and Thomas was all taught the other day about trying to curb this some. And I've also talked with Decal County who uses the same company, they're very, very pleased with them. I talked to Etowah County, I talked with some different people, they're all very pleased with what they get with them. I would also say I would like to go up and talk with the one in Decal County, cause like I said, we talked different avenues and I've talked with the sheriff, he's interested in going. Greg, you said you was interested in going, Thomas is. Because the way they do theirs, I think, could be beneficial to us in the long run also. But with that being said, I would actually really consider, a lot for us to consider looking to change to viewpoint for mobile x, just because it can benefit us. You know, we have somebody with abdominal pain, if it's after hours, where do they go, sheriff? To the jail, now we got CT, we got x-ray, whatever, and a doctor's visit, where these people come in and say, okay, well, this is what's the matter with them.
So, do we have a, do we have a proposal from them at this time?
Yes.
We, we do, Karen is, I don't know if you have, still with your handy right there, I'm pretty sure she has, she's been in contact with them several times. And even southern health partner said that any given time, the best I can remember, that if we wanted to change over to this company, there would be no trouble with them, they would make it happen.
We'll probably have to get an updated version of the agreement, but the one that was provided to us before.
Is there, is there a consensus to move forward with getting the information and the cost and, and then let's, let's have that on the agenda for the December meeting? And we should be ready to act on that?
Yes.
So that's, I think we're good, alright? Appreciate your work on that.
I'm gonna call, like me and you was talking to Morgan, I'm gonna call back to, I know Decal County is a long way, but when I talked to that lady, I was very impressed.
Okay.
With the way they run their, their system. And I would love to go up there and, like I said, they have no sense of room, the wheel they got one, where we can just kinda take it and agrees it to help us.
The number, number of other items that Michael's led the investigation into related to our jail medical. And so over the next ninety days or less, hopefully we'll come up with some proposals for additional changes and working closely with Sheriff Terman and the jail administrator, so. Alright, we'll move forward with that for the December meeting, then that one item and we'll go from there. Anything else you have? Commissioners, anybody have anything?
Are we through?
Not quite.
Okay.
Not quite.
Your question time.
Yeah.
Oh, you, you have questions, but you save them to the end.
Yeah.
What about staff, anybody have reports, department heads?
There was a update from Sheriff Terman policies, did we?
We're gonna come back to that. Yeah, jumped around to the commission and, yeah, we'll have that conversation. Thank you. Yeah, I don't wanna get on the wrong side of the law.
That's right.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Alright, Sheriff? Called on you earlier and you were not in here as a department head, sorry about that, but this is your, this is your time, come on in. Good deal.
Um, the policy that we were wanting to speak about is our K nine policy and we're still working on it. However, the K nine that we're wishing purchase is a actually road K nine. Whereas the, the, the K nines that are in question are actually assigned to the, to the jail. I would like to move forward and get in my, my K nine, I know it's covered under insurance or, or should be. Because I've already had the handler trained and the K nine trained and they're, they're kinda waiting in limbo for the payment. But as far as the K nine policy is concerned, we're still working on that. We're waiting for some more, more clarification from insurance and, uh, so we're kinda waiting on that, that's the part of the policy.
The, the one you're talking about trying to move forward with, it's still, I think there's still the question about where it'd be housed, is that, wasn't that an issue?
That's always, that's, that's, that's the issue, you know, uh, but we still have it there. We're, we're discussing where it's gonna be housed, I, I guess we've opened up, we've just opened up some issues here that we've never dealt with before. And we're just trying to get a policy straightened out. So I'm, I'm gonna contact some other sheriffs and see what their policy is. I've, I've already contacted Shelby County and ours is pretty much directly, directly a copy of their, of their policy.
What did the insurance recommend would be housed of it?
I think we'll let Morgan give us an update on that, so we'll all be on the same page.
So, I shared the policy that, that we have currently adopted here in Covington County. And there were some, there were some recommendations given back to us and we're trying to work through how to apply those recommendations to our program. So, the, I, I, where it stands now, I met with the sheriff this morning to talk about what that input is and how that would apply to the way we operate here. And there is another question that I need to go back to insurance and ask about whether there is a, whether some of the information they provided to us is a recommendation or whether it's a coverage requirement and there's a question mark about that. And so if we're able to identify, you know, whether that's a recommendation or a requirement, then we'll know how to tackle, you know, the next issue on the list, which relates to the housing of the animals.
And regardless, the purchase of this K nine, it is gonna be a working dog on patrol. And regardless of what the policy is, I still won't, want the K nine. I wanna move, I would like to move forward with purchasing my K nine. And we can work the policy as it comes, this, this K nine will be used by a post-certified handler with experience. So that's kinda holding me up on some, some missions that I need to accomplish and that is getting all the dope I can off the roads.
Who is the handler if we're?
Jonathan Pitts.
And he's handled dogs before?
Yes, he has.
So the request is that we go ahead and grant the approval to purchase the dog, get him in, in hand?
Yeah, it would be no more different than insuring what we already have.
Subject to possible changing of the, of our policies, depending on what insurance requires. So your request is to bring him in under the current policy, realizing that that could change.
Right, and, and I wanna, I want y'all to understand that the policies of the sheriff's office, although we wanna go very well with the commission, it's still up to the sheriff to make those policies. Uh, cause if we get into this, then y'all are gonna, we possibly could be getting into every policy that the sheriff has.
The commission to insure that dog.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. We, we wanna make sure that everything goes well, but, you know, there's lots of policies and stuff and I, I don't really wanna make it a habit of bringing them all to you guys, because it would waste y'all's time.
Alright, and if we get this dog, he's going to live temporarily or until we find out something with Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Officer Pitts and the other dog that you have that's on patrol, he lives with his handler now too?
That's correct.
And the other two dogs that are at the jail, where are they?
They are at the jail, but they go home with the handlers at night.
Alright, but they're still housed inside the jail?
Yes.
So you've heard the request on moving forward with a dog and we did have conversation on that earlier and we postponed it for further consideration, looking at the policies, talking to the insurance company and I don't think we're quite ready on changing our policy at this time. But, but the request is to move forward under the current policy, realizing that there likely will be some tweaking of the policy in the near future. What are your wishes on that, commissioners?
I don't have a problem with it, I, I just wanna make sure that we follow in compliance with our insurance company regulations within. I know it's a policy that we already have on books and you said, you know, we don't, about your policy, well, I understand that, but the commission has got to grant you the permission to get that dog. You can go get him, but it means we're gonna insure it.
I understand, I understand, I, I'm asking for the insurance, but this, this K nine is no different than one that we already have.
So it's the same type dog as Cujo Huggins that came in here? I mean, it's a dope dog, it's not.
It is a narcotics dog.
Narcotics dog, it's not an attack dog.
No, no.
Sick going, a savage.
What's the breed?
What's the breed, Staffordshire Terrier?
What? Terrier.
Are the two dogs at the jail fully trained?
Yes.
Okay. We just don't have a A post-certified officer right now to handle them?
That's correct.
And we are supposed to have one?
That's part of the discussion with insurance.
Okay, and what happened to the idea that we might could arrange somewhere for those dogs to be outside, that we could?
I have no problem arranging for them being outside, but they work in the jail.
All the time?
No, they don't work there all the time, but I have to keep them somewhere and I do not have a kennel outside.
We were waiting to see if we needed, how large we need to make it, if all of them have to be housed on property, there's no point in building something now and turn around and change it in a month.
Yes.
But if you got, if you acquire the dog and the policies we get set up, we're not looking at a policy that would kick him out in the cold and get, have to get rid of him and he's gonna.
I hate to lose these dogs.
If y'all, once y'all approve them and we jump to the insurance. If y'all, once y'all approve them and we jump through the insurance hoops, then they would be here until you choose not to.
So.
I'll make the motion on, on the conditions that if that policy changes where these dogs are housed and everything, we go by what.
We have to abide by the policy, I think that's the commitment, so there's a motion, second, questions, other time.
But you said you, but you said you wanted four dogs, and this is four.
Further discussion.
I have, I have no problems going along with what the insurance company demands or requires. Uh, I know this, the, the, the question right now is, do they require it, or are they suggesting it?
That's right.
And we just need to clarify that.
And the attorney's clarifying that, so.
That's right.
All right, there's a motion, second, with the acknowledgement, we'll be looking at the policy further over the, between now and the next meeting, I'm sure, for consideration, so. If there's nothing else, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same say?
No.
So Karen's two to one, all right, so that's approved. Any other reports from the sheriff's department? None at this time?
Apparently not.
All right. Commissioners, nothing else come up? Well, with that said, uh, I'll remind you that we.
Excuse me.
Okay, let me mention this, while it's on my mind, remind you that we will not meet, uh, the second, normal second meeting of the month of November. And the same is true in December, we will not have but one meeting in December, unless we have a special call meeting to meet some, some need that arises. So, uh, I look for that first meeting in December to be a, probably an extensive agenda with a lot of stuff on it, uh, anything else from commissioners, Lynn?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted an update on a couple of things, um, I think he left. I was wanting to know if they'd had any progress, or even been started on Marvin voting, on Marvin Odom's voting house, you know, that was something that, uh, I think the maintenance department was gonna work on, but he's not here, so that's okay, we'll find out. Uh, and, um, uh, ARPA money, I think it, we have to submit what we're going to use it for by the end of the year. So I guess we need to have a.
The architect met apparently with the jail staff last week while I was on vacation, and so I think they're going to be sending something else. I had a note on my desk that just said that he had met with them, and will be sending something else for that building. Um, they're supposed to start on the front admin building, uh, as soon as they get all the geotech stuff, survey and all submitted to them. It has been done, but apparently he had not received it last time I talked with him.
I just don't wanna miss the deadline.
Oh, no, we're going to spend that one.
Um, school resource officer, Sheriff, where, where are we on that?
I have two, uh, two hired, or potentially hired, that will start in December, one for Florella, and one for Sean, and I've also covered the, uh, the new deputy position that, uh, we were awarded, so we are, uh, beginning of December, we'll be full staff.
Good deal, that sounds great, I know those schools are ready. Uh, and I also wanted to, uh, thank, or commend Chuck Patterson, I think, no, there he is. On, uh, and this is something that happened a, a while back, but we're here, on the air helicopter rescue, whatever it's called, service that's at the airport. He worked hard to get that service here, and I think that we need to tell him how much we appreciate it. Uh, and one more thing, I think, no, two more things, I'll be through. Um, are you Amy Byrd's daddy? No, but you're kin to him, Amy was leaving the courthouse yesterday, I, I guess most folks know it, but she works for the county and was in an accident, somebody ran over her, and I just wanted to make mention of that, that we need to keep her, I, I think she's doing good, but uh, I just think, being a county employee, I think that especially, you know, that we need to keep her in our.
State employee.
State employee, well, she works at the courthouse.
That's right.
Uh, in our thoughts and prayers, and, uh, let's see, I have one more thing, wait a minute, I get it. Um, oh, the list of cars from the sheriff, did you ever get that of the?
The list Karen.
The one I've gotten is the list they had for, um, tags, so I have that list.
I knew you had asked for it and. Happen to remember that, um, oh, and I have one more thing.
That list that she's referring to is any surplus vehicles that we still have, and we'd just like to have a handle on that, so.
But you, you're the one, and I think last meeting, Mr. McGahey had asked if, that we take a tour of the courthouse. And I don't think we ever set a date or time, but I was up there yesterday, and there are some problems that need to be addressed, and I would love for us to be able to go as a group and take a look at some of those, so I think that was a good suggestion, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
So if we could set a date, that'd be great.
We'll ask Karen to set a, schedule a, a trip for us that works, and, uh, we'll try to do that over the next couple of weeks during the holidays.
Sounds good, I'm through, Lynn.
And from what, on, uh, Ms., Ms. Amy, the, uh, preliminary findings was no broken bones, but there's still a possibility to be some internal damage, but we're still waiting to see on that.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, all minds are clear, we stand to.